Good evening and welcome to the January 14, 2019, meeting of the Merrimack School Board for Budget Hearings. If you could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public, or three is Public Participation. And when they'd like to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Rose Marie Rung. I live at 21 Ministerial Drive. And I'm a newly-elected state representative for Merrimack, along with several others. There's three other freshmen besides myself. And we're very committed to representing our community in Concord and making sure that your interests are very well represented. So I just wanted to let you know that one of us will be at all the school board meetings, if you have any questions. I also compiled a list of all of the bills that have been submitted to the New Hampshire, the House Education Committee. And I know you get those anyway, but I prepared the list. I sent it to you electronically as well. If there's any one in particular that you would like us to advocate for, please, please let me know. It does make a difference having a state rep being friends or in accord with a relationship with a state rep on that committee. So we do have some relationships built already that we'd be happy to represent your interest or facilitate having anyone that wants to speak at a public hearing. The way the process works is the bills are now Legislative Service Requests, which is like the request to compile a bill. They're now being assigned bill numbers and assigning, assigned to a House Committee that's appropriate for the topic of the bill. The first order of business with the Committee is to hold a public hearing. And then not more than, not, not less than 24 hours after the public hearing, there's, the Committee can go into executive session and they'll vote to, that the bill is either ought to pass the House, in expedient to legislate, which pretty much kills it. It can, there's two other options, to retain it or assign it to an interim committee. But the recommendation or the vote of that committee is very important to how it will fare when it goes to the main, the floor of the House. So one thing I realize is that committee process is very, very important. So it's starting now. So if there's any bills that you want us to advocate on your behalf, please let me know. And I'll pass around the list of bills. I know there is one having to do with using private transportation to transport students on school activities. So you may be interested in that one.
Thank you, Rose Marie, and we appreciate the offer of collaboration. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak under Public Participation? Going once, going twice, seeing them, we will close Public Participation. We'll go on to item number four, which is the Further Deliberation Regarding Merrimack High School Athletic Transportation. And we invite to the table Mike Soucy, who is our, our A.D., our Athletic Director. So thank you and welcome again.
Thanks. Good to be here.
So I know that we had some questions as we were deliberating the, deliberating the budget regarding how impacts of, what the, if a turf field was to pass by a Petition Warren Article by citizens, what would the impact be for transportation that we were looking for, for practices and meets or games, matches, whatever you may call them, based on the sport, based on those that would not necessarily use that facility?
So I think there's, there's a couple of questions before we get to that part of it. I think when, when we did the initial proposal for how much it might cost to cover all of the athletic events that we have, all the practice events that we have as far as transportation goes that are offsite, we did that based on a worst and best-case scenario. Worst case being we would cover absolutely everything that we had and the bus driver that took the team over there would stay and wait until the conclusion of practice and then drive them back to Merrimack High School. Best case being we can find drivers for those trips. So worst case, best case. Some of those practices are already covered with one-way transportation. So I guess part of it is, what is our intent with some of those practices? You know, those practices that are located at Reed's Ferry, at Bishop's Field, and at Wasserman Park, our student athletes do have the ability to jump on a regular route bus and get dropped off for that practice. Now that does mean that they do need transportation home from a parent. And that's how they have been handling it, you know, for my two years on the job so far. Other locations, obviously, we don't have the ability to do that, but those locations we do, for sure. So those are covered to a certain extent. And so if we, if we take those off the table, then it's already going to reduce the cost substantially. So that, that's, so my, I guess my question back to you guys is, is what is the intent for those types of practices? Do we want to provide transportation both to and from those practices? And if the answer to that is no, then well, we're already providing that transportation currently without any additional cost to the district.
Any comments to that, or questions or comments to that statement? Andy?
I'm gonna say this strangely, but I don't think we as a board know. Because the request that we made was, what would it cost to, and I think the request was, what would the cost be for transportation to games where we are the home field person, home field, but they were not able to take place at sort of the core complex for Merrimack? I was a little surprised when I saw this, to see practices on here, because I knew that, that we had the transportation going on the buses. I expected the GPS fields and any other place that we did that was a place that we could potentially sponsor that was, that we, I mean, we hear all the time, the kids scrap at the last minute, oh god, it's at this field, you need to get a ride or something like that. So for me, I was actually looking forward to, after hearing from you, some of the facts from you, sort of a discussion with the board to find out what our intent really is. Because you asked a very good question. I think I have an intent, it may not match the rest of the board. So I think the key is, is to understand the, at least in my mind, the sort of details around each one of these. Which ones are the ones that have practices with transportation that exist? Which ones are truly things that we have to do offsite that we could do? For example, if we had an on, you know, a onsite capability at the high school. And then there's other things that are on here, like if you look at the winter, no matter what we do, those are always going to be transportation that needs to be provided that we've never done before. Because there's no such thing as a home, I mean, Merrimack Ten Pin's the closest that you've got really to a home field sort of situation. So I'm gonna let the rest of the board members ask any questions or whatever as we go further, because, but anyway, I just wanted to chime in.
Thank you. Cindy?
I would reiterate what I heard from parents. And I heard primarily a concern, and what I've heard either here or from parents offline, is the concern regarding the home game versus the away game. So in the, for soccer, for example, they were very forthright and came forward and told us, really, their main concern was making sure that the games were covered. I didn't hear any complaints about Reed's Ferry, and I think largely that's because the transportation is provided from school. And it's at a time after many parents are out of work that can then go and pick up their student, whether they pick them up at the high school or Reed's Ferry, probably in many cases, half dozen one the other. Another area where I've heard from parents, really concerned for safety of kids is with hockey, because it's going all the way to Manchester, the time of year, the icy highways. There's a lot of uneasiness about, you know, kids having to try to find a ride with upper classmen if they can't drive themselves and some things like that. But that's just reiterating what I've heard from parents. I don't know if anyone else has any other input or heard any other items of concern of parents that have come forward.
But I think Mike brought up a nice point tonight, that there's definitely areas where we should probably, like, just to take it out of the air and out of context. And that is, I think you're right, Lyons Road, we are providing transportation. When it comes to sports, practices do not go only until the late bus on any sport that I'm aware of. So parents are always expected to pick up their athletes regardless of where they're practicing, because it goes beyond the days, the school district's transportation day. So keeping that in mind, Lyons Road to me does not have, they'll call direct impact as long as those expectations of transportation are completely clear to students and parents. Merrimack Ten Pin, we do have buses that go up that direction as well. I see that as something that there could be a stop there if necessary for the bowling team. I look at the Merrimack YMCA, that does have regular transportation as well to that end of town. So that, that doesn't, to me, become a tangible. GPS would obviously go away if there's a turf field, but if not, that's out of Merrimack. The golf team, cheerleading, cheerleading practice at Londonderry High School, and I do have a question on that when we get to it. Why are we practicing at another high school for cheerleading? Because that's the first I heard of it. Gymnastics Village, for obviously, we don't have a gymnastics facility here, that makes sense. What's, the hockey, as Cindy mentioned, makes sense as far as transportation need, and indoor track for Hampshire Dome. But the cheerleading practice actually caught my eye. And so I was wondering if you could explain why our cheerleaders practice at a different high school?
So they, they don't actually practice at Londonderry High School? That's a mistake on the sheet. They do practice in Londonderry, but it's Cheer Gym. So it's a private facility called Cheer Gym in Londonderry.
Is it specialized equipment?
Yeah, it's specialized equipment, it's tumbling and things like that, that we don't necessarily have the space to do at the high school because of all the other activities that are going on in the main gym. Along with mats.
Mats, so that was the other question I had, are there any special floors, those kind of things? You're saying yes to me. Okay. Those are the questions. Cindy?
I would say one other item that I've heard from parents is not needing transportation on Saturdays and weekends, because that's a time when they can easily go watch their kids play. And then you basically have parents driving to the same, to the same place where we're transporting kids. So I think that's something that we could work with the booster clubs on and particular sports regarding. But the weekend travel, I don't think, unless it's something that's far away, or where a lot of parents may not go, or something like that, you know, might be.
So I would say that, that we do host several ice hockey games on Saturdays. It's a, it's a big day for ice hockey. So Wednesdays and Saturdays are typically ice hockey days. And, you know, the parents are not getting to the rink at the same time as the kids. So if our intent is to provide transportation for ice hockey for all home contests, I would say that we want to include the Saturday games as well, just from a timing standpoint. Because again, the parents aren't going to go to the rink an hour plus before the game, which means if we don't provide that transportation, the kids are going to drive themselves.
Floor's still yours?
And I would suggest maybe reaching out to the parents of hockey or somehow coordinating with them, because it, there may be a trade-off. They may say, hey, if you're doing transportation during, you know, the week, to help us out with the school, maybe we don't need it as much. I mean, because I think a lot of hockey parents, at least I'm one, so I'll speak for myself, not one that's in the high school hockey, but there's many years of getting to the rink an hour early before the game with my kids, so I'm kind of conditioned to do that. But I don't know, you know, how our parents feel.
Sure. So I did, you know, prepare some thoughts and some handouts. So I will distribute these so that you can take a look. Because you're gonna see that, you know, based on just the conversation that we've had, you know, some of those transportations on the initial estimate are gonna be taken off, and that automatically is gonna reduce the cost pretty significantly. And then we can talk about some of the other stuff. So with respect to a turf field, in, in reality, based off of that initial estimate, the only thing that we're taking off of there are the trips to GPS for those games. Everything else that was eliminated on, on, on the third page of the sheet is stuff that we already provide regular transportation for on the regular bus routes, which we just discussed. There wouldn't be any change to the winter schedule because of those facilities and the nature of the turf field's not going to help us there. And then it would, you know, the turf field would pretty much eliminate any transportation for practices during the spring. And it's not that our teams would be able to practice on that turf field all the time, because they, they wouldn't necessarily. But again, we already provide transportation to Bishop's Field and to Reed's Ferry, so we wouldn't need practice transportation during the spring. So you're, you're looking at, you know, coming down from $64,000, basically down to about 38, and the bulk of that 38 is coming from the winter months. But again, the installation of a turf field really doesn't have a tremendous impact on that. In fact, if you, if you take a look at the last two pages of the handout, I basically gave you a proposed calendar of what the turf field would look like this upcoming fall. And it's, it's certainly not, you know, etched in stone by any stretch of the imagination, because it, it assumes a lot of factors. It assumes that I can move some of those games to the dates that I move them to, based on our opponent's schedules. It also assumes that, you know, I can plug in some of those freshman soccer games, because they don't have that schedule yet, in the dates that I slotted them for, because those were open dates. It also assumes that we would want to play all of our potential games on that field, which would mean all varsity, sub-varsity games on that turf field. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. I don't know how that field will be allocated if it were to be installed. But, you know, as you can see, based on this upcoming fall's projection, there aren't very many days that that field would be available for practice purposes. Pretty much every day, it would be utilized for games. And again, that would depend on, you know, how we all decided how we wanted to allocate that field for use. You know, we still do have usable fields that we could use. You know, the freshman play over at Reed's Ferry for soccer right now, it's a usable field, we could still utilize that. You know, field hockey has the field right outside of J Mews, it's a usable field as long as the weather cooperates. So we do have other fields basically on campus that we have access to and that we could use. It's just how do we want to allocate it?
Matt?
Yeah. Do you mind if I ask Michael a question?
Not at all.
No? Do you mind if I ask you a question?
I don't mind at all.
Okay. This is predicated on us having a turf field ready to go come first part of September.
Right.
Right now, as it stands, we don't have a warrant article for a turf field. I hear there is a petition warrant article coming forward. But if that, even if that does come forward, I don't have any specifications that I need to put together or hire somebody to put together for us that would allow us to go out to bid. So we would start that bidding process probably in the spring. And if you're starting a bidding process in the spring, chances are, a lot of those companies that would install a field turf at a school or football stadium, they already have their book of business sewn up. It's like with the roofing bids that we'll present to you this evening. We went out to bid for the, the roofing bids. We got the bids in January 7th, Tom. And so roofing companies have their book of business already allocated for the roofing season, which happens to be the summer, which is the busy part for any school's construction. So I could not guarantee that the field would be in place and operational for you to utilize.
Which would have been my expectation anyway. I, I didn't anticipate that if the warrant article went forward and it passed through the town, that we would have a turf field this upcoming fall. The reason why I put the calendar together is because basically, year to year, it's going to be something similar. And so I do have next fall's schedules. So it was an easy base to work off of, so that I could give you a visual as to how that field might be used and allocated.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. And I understand what you're, what you're doing. I think it's awesome. I just wanted to, to publicly set that expectation out there.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Totally understand. Yep.
Thank you. And Cindy, your hand is up?
My question is, as a school board, could we authorize Matt to go out, go out to bid? So if a petition warrant article were presented and then voted by the voters, that then we would be ready to go in that case? I mean, to be proactive about being prepared? Because if it, if we were in a situation where we had, we were putting it forward as a school board, we would then have that information and then perhaps likely be able to get it completed over the summer? So that's just a thought I wanted to throw out.
Matt? I mean, it's putting you on the spot, but you know a lot of RSA's just on the tip of your tongue, so I didn't know if, what your knee-jerk on that is, which is not legally binding.
Well, you can authorize me to do that. We can look at our budget. Let's say the specifications to be developed would take six weeks. We could get something, and it may cost $20,000. So we'd have to look to see, unless you want to, well, I don't think you want to just invite vendors to come to bid. I think you want to draw up a specification so they could bid to the specification. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's a lot of geotech testing that needs to be done. We need to know what's underneath that field. Is it all sand or is it rock? I'm pretty sure it's all sand, but what I hear from the people in the industry, that is not an ideal condition, ideal condition for a turf field. It's great for when we did the track and when we did the wall and everything like that, but having sand, so we have to know the subsurface conditions. So I'm thinking, you know, off the top of my head, Tom, you can correct me, I'm just throwing a number out there, perhaps 20,000 to get the bid specifications done.
Depending on what.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to define that.
Okay. So that gives us something to consider.
So a lot of that has to do with working with Michael to see, okay, if you're looking at a turf field, it's like Bob Kraft had the, he wanted Gillette done, like, within a two-week period because the grass was coming up. You remember that period? And so they had a company come in and they just did it, and Kraft threw a lot of money at them to work 24/7. So when you look at Gillette Stadium, Gillette, it's all green. The lines come in afterwards, they're painted every single game, unlike other stadiums that have the lines as part of the coloring, the pigment in the grass. If we want to do pigment in the grass, which I think we want to, because we don't want to be out there lining a football field all the time and spraying it down, you know, there are four or five different sports teams that you can create on a field. You know, you can do soccer, you can do football together, you can do lacrosse, I think, too. I think we had spoken about that before.
I think a lot of the multi-use fields are lined, obviously, for football, soccer, and lacrosse for sure, and some of them are even lined for field hockey, which I think would be the intent that we would want to go with.
But that's something we haven't talked about, and we need to come to an understanding.
But I think if, if we are truly trying to develop the potential of a multi-use facility, we want to maximize its use. Right? And so, you know, obviously, in, in the fall, it's, it would be the busiest, because we have three field sports that would be utilizing that field during those seasons. So football, soccer, and field hockey would be important. And then we have lacrosse in the spring. So it's, yeah, it's a challenge.
Okay. Cindy, you had follow-on questions? I think Andy has his hand up, too.
So we have the turf field on our CIP a couple of years out. So if we were to go ahead and do the specifications, pay the amount of money, at some point, we would have to pay that anyways.
Absolutely.
So if we did that, how obsolete would it be two years from now, or would it still hold pretty much?
Oh, it would still hold, true. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy?
So I think that we as a board need to take action tonight to authorize, to decide if we want to authorize him to do it. Because if the parents do have a petition warrant article that's gonna be voted on in April, we better darn well have a spec in place for what it's gonna be. What's, because in order to promote it, they're gonna need the specs to do it. I was under the impression that there was more than what exists. I thought planning a building might have had more than they did, and they don't. So we have to have a plan, a spec in place that can be shown, so people know what they're going on, not just a willy-nilly 1.2 million or what, whatever it ends up being. So I, I plan that we at some point tonight make a motion to authorize them to expend the money to do it.
Or if you use the phrase, "you better darn well," and you're talking to me, then I take that as a directive.
Well, I'm one guy sitting up here.
I'm just joking.
Yeah, great. And I'm the only guy up here on this side.
That's true.
Just seeing how.
Yes. Well, there were years I was the only girl, so my day has come. So, just kidding on that. But anyways, so I, I tend to agree with what you're saying, Andy. I definitely think we want to, you know, take the initiative. I think there is a little flexibility in the budget, like, there might be a little money that we could use toward that.
Yeah.
It's there?
There's a little flexibility in the budget.
Okay. So make sure. Sometimes with salary, retirements, and hires, we can find a dollar here and there, so, so there you go. So on that note, if, if that's something that you're, that seems to be the right, seems to be the right agenda item, so it's now or never. Andy?
Fine. I move that we direct the Assistant Superintendent of Business, or whatever his title is down there.
That's totally it?
Yeah, that's, I can never remember. To go out and to procure a plan and specification for a turf field, working with the Athletic Director, to do all the proper decisions on lineage, lineage, lining, whatever the word is.
Design?
Design. But includes the lines.
The most designs is?
Utilization.
Yeah, there you go.
And make sure that, that it is clear, so we have a specification in place well before the election, so that we can be promoted and explain what the petition warrant article might be.
Is there a second? Seconded by Brandy. Are there any questions or comments to the, Cindy?
I mean, I'll be supporting this motion, because if the taxpayers tell us that's what they want, and based on the fact that it's a petition warrant article that will be coming forward, I think it's in our best interest to be ready, and also to be able to provide them as much information before voting day as possible. So I'll be supporting this.
And I also agree, and I look at it this way, whether it's now or later, that this turf field does come into play, it's been the intent of the board for a number of years to eventually have one considered. It's been on our CIP for at least five years now. And with that, it's work that isn't going to become obsolete. The ground is not going to become a new material between now and whenever time the execution happens. So if we're doing some groundwork, literally, for a future project, then it's, it's still time well spent and it won't be wasted. So for it as well. Are there any other questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none, and the motion carries 5-0-0. Andy?
I have another question.
Yeah, Mike's still here.
So.
Use him.
So I was sitting here trying to do a back-of-the-napkin, what if, because obviously, we can't plan for the turf field, because the turf field's not here. It's not, we don't know what it's gonna be, and we're doing our proposed budget.
Sure.
And if it's the will of the rest of the board to fulfill all the things that are on here, minus the ones where transportation might exist already, I came up with a number similar to you, what your number was, which you, in your handout you just gave us, except it was $5,500 off. And I was like, $5,500 off? On the list that you provided us, there's two items that didn't exist on the list that we've seen before. Do you know what they are?
Nope.
This is a quiz.
Off the top of my head.
Ski practice and ski meets. Those were not on our list, which equal exactly $5,500.
And, and those could be taken off also, because we already provide those as part of our regular transportation budget.
Right. That's why, because I saw that and I was like, you know, because, because, for example, I mean, just to, did I write it down? Essentially, if you do, if you, if you remove all the Reed's Ferry or the Bishop Field or things like that, you come up with about, you know, 13, $14,000, I think. I didn't do the tennis matches, but, but 13 or $14,000, so that would reduce that line item down to like 50,000 as opposed to 64, is an example, right, if we did that. But if you added the 5,500 in, it would then bring it higher, so.
Yeah, we would keep those, those out, because we already provide those, that transportation is part of our regular transportation budget.
So I guess the question I have for the rest of the board, after we ask all of our questions, is, do we want to do a proposal for this line item for all the transportation minus the Reed's Ferry or Bishop's or Wasserman Park Field, and do transportation everywhere else where there's? else where there's a practice or a game? I guess, I'm not clear that that's, that we want, I don't know how far we want to go with this. I guess that's my question, is somebody sitting here, so.
Well, I think what we talked about, and actually in our packet, there's something we have in the dress, the elephant in the room, so we'll do that in a minute. But the biggest thing is, the opportunity to expend it is only achievable by the amount of bus drivers we can procure to execute it. And so actually, in our packets, we have a copy of the November 2, 2018 article, the New Hampshire Union Leader, about the Bus Driver Shortage Commission releasing their recommendations. And so we do have a bus driver shortage that's statewide, so, you know, right now, if we do budget it, it's, there's no guarantee that we can actually execute on it, but without budgeting for it, we also limit the district's ability to be able to plan for it. So that's what the board needs to really consider, but just with no promises because you can't make a bus driver come out of nowhere, so you can't make one up. So, Andy?
Which begs the question, if we plan and budget for transportation and we tell parents transportation's there, but yet we come through a week and we can't provide it because there's no bus driver, is that a, is that a proper way of planning? I guess that, I mean, that's not to you, that's just a general statement. If we can't guarantee there'll be a, I mean, we know when we go in the mornings and the afternoons, there's a bus driver for all the routes, it's contractually obligated. These, it's not, I mean, and we heard that it can't necessarily be guaranteed. So how do you make that a reliable transportation option for this, even if we budget for it? You can't, parents can't rely on it necessarily.
Matt?
Well, the thing is, looking at this whole plan, there's still, in my mind, a lot of questions to be answered. You know, Reed's is one-way transportation, already with a bus route that goes to Reed's Ferry School. If parents with other sports have the bus dropping off and picking up, perhaps some Reed's Ferry parents would like the pickup at the end of the practice, too, to drive them to a central location, if that's what we're doing. Or are we dropping them off at home after school? Are we doing a fuller run? Now, the other way, if you don't have an STA bus driver and you've made the guarantee that you will do to the best of your ability to find transportation, the other route, which we have done in the past when we've had a severe bus driver shortage, is to hire a coach bus. And those are a lot more expensive than what you see there. So that's why I kind of caution as to trying to cut that figure because if we've made the promise, then somehow we have to try and deliver. And that's an option. I'm not saying it's going to happen a lot of times, but it may happen.
Okay, so I see Brandy and then Cindy.
I think part of the challenge, from my understanding of this whole process thus far, is that initially, parents felt that they were told that transportation was provided and it really wasn't. And I think there was some safety concerns surrounding that because they were walking into it with the understanding that there was going to be some form of transportation for their child to go to the GPS fields. And what wound up happening was children were getting in cars with other children, well, children, licensed drivers, to go to Bedford for practices. And there was some concern surrounding that because they didn't feel that that was the safest alternative for them. I think if we are doing our part in providing, as to the best of our ability, transportation, so we have it in the budget, we can't guarantee anything, but we can certainly provide, if we know that there is, let's say, a particular week that there is a shortage or we are struggling with finding bus drivers, you know, communication with parents can go a long way to say, you know, here's our situation at this point. We've been able to provide it until, you know, October 5th, and from this point, you know, we're really unsure, please make some accommodations as needed for your child. I think what parents are really requesting is a plan, and when we deviate from that plan, being able to provide them with some communication surrounding what the alternative is with a longer timeframe other than that day where parents and kids are scrambling, trying to figure out how to get their kid to a game or to practice. So I think if there's a proactive approach with the students and their parents per sport, and whether that's a booster communication or comes from the school, however, we need to do it so that way we are, we have it in our budget, we do it to the best of our ability, but where there is a shortage, we are proactively communicating with the parents and the students to make some necessary accommodations. I think that would be my option.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I know that there was some confusion this past fall. I'm not sure where that confusion took place or why. On August 17, I held a parent and student athlete meeting, prior to all fall sports. We had well over 300 attendees at that meeting, so we, I think most of the students were represented and their parents were there. And at that meeting, I expressly indicated that we do not provide transportation to home contests off-site. So I tried to be proactive with that. I tried to get it out front to everybody well before they had to use those facilities. So we did attempt to do that, so I don't know why there was confusion as to whether we were going to provide transportation or not. I know there was confusion because I dealt with the phone calls on that day, but we tried to get out in front of it on August 17 with that parent meeting.
Thank you. So you have your hand up as well.
I mean, I would agree with Brandy. I'm not willing to jump on the bandwagon of getting coach buses as another backup, but I feel like if we make a good faith effort to move the needle a little bit in that direction in the spirit of student safety, I'm in favor of that. But completely dotting every i, crossing every t, make sure, you know, there's a lot that happens with that, given the current climate of our bus driver situation. So I'd be in favor of, like I said, trying to move the needle a little bit, see where that takes us, and see how we handle it, rather than, I just don't think throwing a lot of money at it is really going to solve it. But that, with the communication and being proactive, trying extra communication and so on, would be helpful as it relates to this, but I would support increasing the budget to provide, again, some of this transportation, but again, not for the charter buses and things like that.
Okay. And to clarify, is our budget right now does have $63,000 in it for that transportation? So what we would probably want to do is the board has adjusted downward to meet, to, based on the feedback we got on those 03, 05, 4 sites that students end up taking regular route buses to. So we can make an adjustment downward to the existing budget line, but it is in there for us to dicker with as we need to.
And furthermore, I strongly would recommend that we sit down with each of these groups, these parent groups, and work out what works best with the resources we have and how we can best support the safety of the students in those sports and where we can communicate and maybe we were providing something they no longer need, and therefore, we would just save taxpayer dollars by having that communication and working with those stakeholders.
Is your hand kind of up? Okay, it's up. Take it.
So I'm still struggling with where we draw the line. Are we saying that we want to take the ones that are the GPS fields and budget those? Do we want to add soccer, hockey into those? How do we come up with a budget figure? It's just a question. I mean, we're sort of.
I think we take what we have and instead of, we just carve out what we feel has been justified as unnecessary, and that's Lions Road, that is Merrimack Tenpin, because we can really make that work, too. You know, bowling balls aren't light, but neither are hockey sticks or whatever, they're ticking around to things, field hockey sticks. Merrimack YMCA can be taken out because it's in Merrimack. Reed's Ferry can be taken out. Wasman Park can be taken out. Bishop Field can be taken out. But the ones that need to stay are, if we want to, based on the feedback, I've heard from this board, and tell me if I'm misguided, what we want, we are considering doing, is GPS needs to stay. Golf would also need to stay because that's Sahigan Woods, that's outside of Merrimack. Gymnastics Village, West Side Arena and Conway Arena for Hockey, Hampshire Dome for indoor track, London Dairy.
Cheer Gym.
Cheer Gym for cheerleading. I know I was going to forget it, by the way. And that covers it. So anything under those locations, I think, are what we were discussing as the critical need, because there's really no other way of doing it with the existing busing system that we have in place. Am I wrong or am I getting it? Go ahead.
I mean, that sounds good to me. The other, I think, item is, as it relates to the transportation, is I would suggest a requirement that kids take it and back if we're providing it because, unless they have a parent note or they have to work or they have some other kind of arrangement, because otherwise, you get into the, it's not cool to take the bus and then nobody wants to take the bus and then we're providing the bus and no one will get on it. So that would be the other thing that I would see as unintended consequence, but that would just be something I would suggest.
So we do that currently, obviously, for all of our away games, and so the policy wouldn't be any different here. It will increase my phone calls and emails, for sure, from parents that, you know, want to pick their child up, and I get it. I think part of the confusion with the GPS fields from years past is that, I think three years ago, my predecessor did provide some transportation, not consistently, but some transportation to GPS for some of those home games. And exactly what you just described happened. We'd have a bus sitting outside the high school waiting to pick kids up to take them to GPS field and there was nobody to take because all those kids got transportation over. And so that does happen, and that is frustrating, I'm sure. And I think that's part of the reason why it started to get, you know, backed off from, and then we just didn't have the drivers to provide that on a consistent basis, so it got eliminated completely.
Okay. And just to add, you know, golf, how many golfers do we have in our golf team?
So it has grown and we had 12 golfers this year, which was tremendous, and I think, you know, assuming our coach comes back, the kids really loved him, I think it'll grow some more to the point where we may have both a varsity and a JV golf team.
Okay, so definitely busing versus maybe having an in-house vehicle. So that's why I was asking.
Yeah, so this year, I mean, under most circumstances, only eight golfers compete in any particular match.
Okay.
Because that's all they can compete in any particular match. So in reality, we could probably relegate them to one of our three-school vans, well, two of them would fit enough. One of them would not.
So basically, we would take out the match, the 43965 for the match play, but the practice would still need transportation?
Right. Because we have too many.
Okay.
Andy?
So a quick analysis here, so if we look at the proposal and take away what you just described, the Lions Fields, the Merrimack Tenpins, the YMCA, the Reed's Ferry, Bishop Field, and the Wasman Parks, excuse me, Wasman Parks, of that $63,939, it takes away $33,053, which brings the total down to about just shy of $31,000. So that, if we did that, that would bring this budget item down to that amount, approximately $31,000.
Five percent or something?
Yeah, a little over 50%. Yeah.
Yeah. So, excellent. So do we have what we need to be able to make informed decisions when budget decisions are made tonight? Excellent. So Mike, thank you so much for spending the extra time, the extra research. It was excellent information for us to work with.
I'm glad.
Thanks so much.
So we are on to item number five, which is an additional budget hearing focusing on the Maintenance Department. So I'll turn it over to Matt Chevadel and Director Tom Tussell.
Okay, Tom's coming forward, if you don't mind. I'd, seeing I don't want him to be lonely out there, I'm going to join him to his left. No, I'm going to join him to his right. Where are you sitting, right there?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, well, everybody knows Tom Tussell, our Facilities Director, and he's going to be talking about some of the long-range planning we have done over the years. The CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, when I first got here, was a piece of paper that we did out of obligation in the RSAs, quite frankly. It was something that we put down and we just went ahead and went through the motions and went in front of the, I don't even know if we went in front of the board. I think we did. We went in front of the board, we went in front of the Planning Board because we had to, and it was something that was in a living, breathing document that we really kind of let frame our work. Over the years, it is really, as you've seen, when you look back at older versions, you look at all the projects that we have completed due to the planning phases of the Capital Improvement Program and the conversations we've had with the Planning and Building Committee, conversations we've had with the school board who give us direction, and the conversations that we have with the Town of Merrimack Planning Board on what we have down on the sheet, when they should be done, what is the latest status. And you've always been told when things change. Like, we always have, we have a roofing program that goes out, if you look at the bonded debt schedule, probably 30 years, you know, when the roofs are going to be accomplished. And you know in around four or five years, we're going to have a dry period where we're not going to be doing any roofs for a while. So that would be a perfect place that, we had talked about starting a capital reserve for roof projects. So that's long-range planning, that's kind of the stuff that we do. Years ago, when, not when I first got here, but probably 12 years ago, we did a Honeywell project, an energy audit of the entire school district. It was a 12-year project as far as lease purchase goes, with a non-appropriation clause in it. It passed the voters, and through that, we replaced all the lighting in the district, saving electricity. We sealed the building envelopes. We put in new VFDs. We put in a big EBI system.
Is a management system that turns on, turns off, all the pumps, heats, time dates.
So Tom can sit at his desk with a computer screen and look to see what room in what facility, what the temperature is. And he can look and regulate all the pumps and everything is done by the, do you know what the acronym stands for?
No.
Okay. Well, it's an EBI system by Honeywell, and it's one of these things that we use to look to see where there are issues, look to see where we are having problems, and lets us know when things go awry as far as all the motors and everything that are in these facilities before we basically know what's going on. Honeywell is our main contractor on all of the mechanicals. They do the maintenance. We change filters and everything like that, but they change filters also. So, you know, everything, as far as what they do, is we've had that partnership going. So we did the preventative energy savings program that paid for itself. You got new equipment and you traded capital costs for energy costs. So the money you weren't paying to Eversource or to Irving Oil or to anybody like that, you started, you know, paying to the lease purchase. So every year, it's gone through a review and every year, there has been savings, taking into account atmospheric conditions, weather changes, everything like that. So that's an analysis that's been ongoing every single year. Because remember, the statement was that if we didn't save you money in a particular year, we would cut you a check for the difference. And they're not in the business of cutting us checks, so everything that, every bill that we've paid off of this, everything has gone to them, they've analyzed. off of this, everything has gone to them. They've analyzed it. We've proofed those analytics, and we found it to be true over the 12 years that we actually had the program. We also had, I'm just going to go through, do you mind?
No, go right ahead.
Just going to go through this a little bit. We also had the swap over to natural gas. That was a five-year lease purchase. The payback, four years? Four years. Four-year lease purchase. The payback was like four years, basically. Natural gas did go up a little bit, and oil went down a little bit, but the payback is still there. And so we replaced all the burners on every single device to natural gas, because they were oil-fired before. And then everything that we have in the district, with the exception of Reed's Ferry, because there's not a line out there, and we can't get them to put a line out there, is all on natural gas. And that all came for when Liberty Utilities came on board, from, I forget the name of the other gas company years ago. But Liberty came on board, they changed their business model. So they said, "We'll run you lines to your school if our payback is seven years," because it used to be five years. So they changed it. We even worked with the Our Lady of Mercy Catholic Church down the street, because we were running pipe going to Mastacola Elementary School, taking it off Babusick Lake Road. And so we had a meeting with the father there, and we brought in Liberty Utilities to do an intro, and we helped them out with a gas conversion, too, because their project went along with our project. They're in the area, they might as well. And I hope it earned me some points along the way that I can collect later on in life. But we did a lot of those projects. We did the chiller. Remember that big beast we had on top of the high school cafeteria, that when someone would speak and say something important, it would start its engines, and no one could hear a thing? Well, that's all been replaced. That was on the, how long was that on the plan, Tom?
That was on a few years, but we did have a major failure, too, in 1415, and that's why that was budgeted to do. Replacing it was about $190,000. So it was quite a bit of money, but it did get replaced, updated. We did have some kind of, some issues with it providing capacity for us, so that was addressed at the same time.
Yeah. And then we're looking at, you know, there are items that just kind of come to the fore that you don't expect. The switchgear at the high school, started having problems with that. Had a problem over vacation, right?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, had a problem over vacation. We had to have custom electric come down, reset the breaker on it, everything like that. The other switchgears that we've had in place, we haven't had any issues with them.
No, we haven't.
We haven't. And that one has been problematic. So that's why we're doing the capital reserve fund. We're going to plan for it, design it, and then, you know, get it done and replaced, because it has been tripping all by itself, and the switchgear, one of these days, it's not going to reset. And so whenever it does fail, we used to reset it ourselves, quite frankly. And that was one of the first things Shirley LeMay taught me, I don't think she liked me too much, is how to reset the switchgear when it went down. So you had the big kind of pole that you had to crank down, and it made a little bit of a ruckus. She didn't tell me it was going to make that sound when it finally kicked in. I think she kind of found that mildly amusing, that I jumped a bit. But anyway. So those are the types of things that we look at every single day. We're looking at windows, they're on the CIP. We're looking at a lot of things. Paving. Your high school hasn't been paved, the parking lots since. I was talking to Scott Isabelle, you probably don't remember, you don't know that name, but he was there before I came forward. I was talking to Scott, and he calls up from time to time, and we kind of trade ideas back and forth. And the parking lots hadn't been paved until, since like 1997. So that's something we want to put on your radar. So when people say that we don't plan, I think we plan very well. But with a facility, we have six facilities. I meant to add up how many square feet there are in these facilities, because I have a little sheet. But high school alone is over 160,000 square feet. Middle school's 120. Reed's and Thorne's around 65,000 square feet. MES, I think is around maybe close to 60.
It comes out roughly.
Oh, thank you, Tom. You had the number all wrong, and you just sit, let me sit here, huh?
No, well, you were doing such a great job.
No, thank you.
A little bit over 650,000 square feet, district-wide.
Yeah.
Including all the schools in the four buildings that we own.
Of building infrastructure that we have to, "we" meaning, I'm in my office, Tom is the Facilities Director, and it's not like we have an army of people to go around. We do the best we can with what we have, and we do, I think we do an excellent job in keeping on top, and trying to keep on top of everything that's going on. We listen to the staff. If they say something doesn't smell right here, we, it's just like security. You know, staff is your greatest asset as far as security. Well, if staff sees something, like a little water leak or something, they report it right away. We get on top of it, and then we figure out what's going on, and we see if there's a larger issue, or something that needs to be addressed further down the road. So with that, and I didn't mean to go on as long as I did, Tom, I'm sorry. But with that, I'll just bring it over to Tom, and he'll talk to you about some other projects that we have done. And then we'll talk about the difference in this piece of roof versus this piece of roof.
Planning on a large scale for Merrimack School District is quite involved. Sometimes it's, as things come to us. We started looking at different things at different times. If you look at, like the bleachers, unfortunately, in 2011, we had a problem with our big bleachers. We had them repaired. That let us take, start taking a look at all bleachers that we have in the district. We came back the following year, 2012, 13. We ended up doing the side bleachers in the high school. So one year, we did the large bleachers at the end, the two side ones at the high school. This year, we're actually addressing the outside bleachers at the high school. We do have, still have a couple more bleach, sets of bleachers on our CIP. That would include Mastacola Upper Elementary School, APR in Smith Gym. Those are all projects that need to be done. But as everything that comes to us, it's a difficult problem, and it's your problem, to weigh it out and see where we end up going and what time we go there. Meaning that bleachers are on the list, boilers are stuff that we look at. As Matt mentioned, we did the burner update in 2014. Most of our boilers in the school districts is 1991. Sometimes we use information that comes to us. When we at Honeywell, take a trip through our schools and walk through it, engineers, and saying, "This is the end of life here, this is the end of life there." From the last report, we gathered that our boilers are all at the end of their life expectancy, and that they need to be addressed at some point. We also look at other things, such as cameras. In 2008, 2009, we started looking at cameras. We did a large expense, expense, and then we've come back every so often to update that. And we look at them in this coming year's budget, there's some more cameras coming. And that basically came when Matt and I met with the Homeland Security, as we did this year, at every school, for them to come and take a look at our buildings, and give us some ideas. So it's long-term planning like that, just as how we ended up doing the secured entrances. That was planning, it was news, and it was kind of forced on us, and then we responded, and we did due diligence and planning for that.
If I can, just right there. Let's talk about safety and security. We had a meeting with Scott Lamerton from Department of Homeland Security, and he brought his crew with us. He's gone through every single building that we have. He spent three to four hours in every single building that we have, and he is far impressed with our camera program, our ongoing camera program. The way they're maintained, the way we are not looking to just stand pat, but to move forward. We started off with $212,000 in an operating budget that the board way back then approved, and we brought the first security cameras into this district. That was a major thing. That was before a lot of stuff that we know of has happened. But we've kept up with it, and we've changed them out. We used to have analog cameras on a DVR. They've been all changed out to IP cameras. Then we've done additional cameras, and it's something that we're way ahead. And then with our secure entrances, I remember sitting at the Planning Board, getting castigated, because we were talking about secure entrances in the school, and one member said, "That doesn't make a difference. I can walk right into your schools anyway." And it's like, "No, we need these secure entrances, because someone will stop you when you walk in." He could walk into the school because he had a certain credential, and they knew who he was. But that was really kind of a false statement, anyway. But the secure entrances have served a purpose, and it was one of the things that Homeland Security was very, very, very happy to see, and that all our doors were locked during the day. There's some districts to the west of us who leave every single door open all day long. And we found out these stories. There's another district to the north of us who built a $60 million middle school, high school that doesn't have one security camera in that entire building. So that was a shock to them when they found that out, and kind of a pat on the back to us, that we have been so proactive, and the school boards that we have worked for have seen the need for them. It's not being invasive, it's being safe. So that's definitely one of the things we plan for. Go ahead.
Okay. Other things are like gym floor replacements. We haven't talked about that. We know at this point, I know, and I started working with Marge and Matt, and planning this out, and this is something you're going to see on a SIP. Matter of fact, we had, one of our schools, the high school, mentioned it to us this year. We have two floors, the high school floor, and Mastacola Upper Elementary School's APR, end of life, as far as they've been sanded as many times as they can be. So the next time we go about to redo those gyms, they're going to have to be replaced. But that's a cycle that might be seven years out. So it's not, nothing is going to happen today, but you'll be seeing on a SIP, and I wouldn't be surprised. And these are things that just come up to us. As we talk about parking lots, we've done a number of parking lots, I'm going to tell you, when we first started talking about paving and stuff, the two big things we were talking about, one was Reed's Ferry's Lyons Road, and the other one was O'Gara Drive. Reed's Ferry's Lyons Road was done. O'Gara Drive is still sitting out there, but that's only because during that time, we had other items come to us. A, there was the high school loop in front. There was trip and fall dangers there. We had to address that first. We moved other things back. Thornton's Ferry, for a while, we did the patching over there, as we did crack filling. It probably wasn't the best-looking parking lot for a long time, but it took us through five years, and it got us to the point that we could actually do it. That's all stuff that we plan out. If I'm looking ahead in the future, are there going to be others? Absolutely. Reed's Ferry's parking lot is somewhere in the future. So to think that we're not thinking about it, we could be planning at our level. Unfortunately, you really don't see a lot of this until it starts coming up in the SIP. And I think that that's kind of a fair way of putting it. Roofs, we do. Windows, we know about. Windows at the high school, we talked about a number of years ago, but unfortunately, it's sometimes what is the will at that time, and you kind of have, it gets moved by other priorities, as like paving did. I know, this is kind of a trip down memory, in memory lane here, but there was one point, when I first started, we were worried about asbestos. Well, some of the asbestos did, and we did some projects, but not really full-force asbestos projects. And I remember as my first board meeting I ever went to, as the Assistant Director, and I came to the board, and we started talking about the high school F-section, and we actually went for a little walk afterward, and everybody was pretty, pretty much in agreement that it needed to be done, and needed to be done then. A number of years went by. We did another abatement at Reed's Ferry, and then we actually took a couple of years off. When we started back in 2011, 12, we started talking about this again. We were going back into our asbestos, and people were, I went to the meeting, people were beside themselves, "Why haven't we ever taken care of it?" Well, as we like to say, and we always look forward, this is how we plan on addressing it. And then we went to a period from 2011, 12, all the way to 17, 18, and we just took all the known asbestos in flooring and in mastic out of our schools, unless it's concealed. I mean, if it's concealed behind a wall or something like that, it's still could be there. But anything that is accessible is gone. So those are all things that we plan for, and we look at now and in the future. And there's many other things, but it's hard to come up and kind of not read off a laundry list of items that we have without becoming the person who just comes with a lot of problems.
And honestly, I think what you've presented over the years, we have counted on you, and you have delivered on exceeding life expectancy of our facilities. I've seen other entities that basically set it and forget it, and don't put the time or the attention into maintaining, and then let it depreciate, then ask for a replacement. And just basically, you know, they wear that, like, they take a car, and they don't get oil changes, and knowing it's going to die faster, but they're going to get a new one. We don't do that. We do our oil changes. We, you know, make sure it's maintained at the highest level, stay on top of the maintenance. And our machinery runs longer than it really should, based on what the manufacturer was hoping for, because they wanted a replacement, obviously. When it comes to things like roofing, when I came on the board, we had just used up, I think, around 2010, we just used up the last of any roofing capital reserve funds. So my entire tenure on the board, there's never been the opportunity to ask, because we've always been doing these roofing projects with operating funds. So, because, you know, you can't ask for money and spend money at the same time and be responsible. That's not the way we could do business. So, you know, long-term, you know, and you are measuring our roofs in acres, and you still do, you're doing a lot of work in the, what, nine years I've been on the board. And there's just never been a year where we haven't had a full vetting of what's out there. When it comes to this year, there was definitely surprise with the switchgears, but then again, you know, I think what we're facing is, you know, we can't maintain it because the manufacturer doesn't exist. That's usually when you come to us, where we can't face it any other way anymore, because we have nowhere to turn, just like the heat wheel. We had nowhere to turn, because the manufacturing didn't exist for it anymore. So that shows that it truly, you outlasted the manufacturer with the way you did business. So I wanted to put it out there, that that's the only reason we're coming into these little surprises, because we outlasted, you know, we outlasted the company and the equipment. So, you know, kudos to you for that work. So I wanted to just put that out there and say thank you.
You all set? You want me to go on, or do you want me to talk about roofs?
Yeah.
Want to move to roofs? All right, let's move to roofs. Again, I'm going to take a short amount of your time to kind of go down memory lane here, and talk about long-term planning. When I first took over as the Director, that was the summer of 2008, my predecessor looked at Mastacola Elementary School, and there was two sections in that school, and we did, had buckets going up and down the halls, because we had leaks going on. had buckets going up and down the halls because we had leaks going on. Shirley was able to steer through the board, and they made it through with a roofing product that was proven long-lasting, and the warranty would be there a long time. When we went to the following year, in 2009, I don't think everybody at that point expected that we were going to be doing roofs on a regular basis. That pretty much was a panic year, as far as, there was a section at the high school, it was D, and I remember walking up and going into the superintendent's office and said, "We cannot go another year without doing this one section. It's wet, there's moisture in there. When I walk up there, I can see it bubbling up. We haven't got widespread leaks, but it's there." We were able to get it through. It was an emergency. We got section D done. I remember being out there in the summer, it was ripped off, and I bent over and I said, "Jeez, it's really wet in this area." And one of the gentlemen there says, "That isn't really where it was wet, it was really wet over at the other side." Okay. When they picked up the dumpster later in that day, and they have to tilt the dumpster up, a swish of water came out of the back. It was unbelievable how much water was in that one section. It was absolutely the right call to take care of it when we did. Then we got to 2010. We did not do a roof at that time, but when we were into 2011, Reed's Ferry, at that point, I had a little more time in this position, and we started developing a long-range plans for roofs, because we, I could see that we were going from emergency to emergency, and we were just not looking forward enough to address the problem. That year, I brought to the board as, I don't know how you would feel about this, but I don't think they were overly happy, but they certainly handled it well. We had roughly 72% of our roofs was off warranty. We were in trouble as far as getting roofs. At that point, they made a commitment to doing roofs. Reed's Ferry that year, we did. We did seven sections, four of them. We had infrared scanners done, and four of them came up wet. Again, we got water inside the building. We had to strip the insulation off and do the roofs. And really, after that, we really started being more committed to making sure that I didn't have a problem before I came to the board. In the following year, 2012, we also had a bunch of buckets going down ME section, you would say from room 12 down to maybe 18 and 19. There was a lot of 50-gallon drums when we had a rainstorm. We took care of that. And really, since that date, we have not had emergency roof problems where we've been too late. And one of the reasons why, I think the reason why I started back when I first took over the job, or Shirley had it, she was committed to long-range roofs, roofs that would not last 10 years. Let me say that rubber roofs or single-ply roofs, there's some people out there who absolutely love them. I understand their philosophy. Sometimes a rubber roof, I've seen them with 10-year warranties. The TPOs at the middle school, and we know what happened to us, after 10 years, the seams were splitting. We also have, I've also had seen, once we've had rubber roofs with 15 years and 20 years life expectancy. And I would be the first to tell you, as I said, there are some people who love rubber roofs. They'd rather put on three over 30 years than put on one. Yes, there is a little bit of a premium to put on a high-quality roof. Absolutely is. But I think we were back in 2011 and doing roofs, and the school, the school board at that time looked at where we were with 72% of our roofs, saying, and their commitment was, not only do we want to have to take care of for us, but we would not want to put a board that's in the future in the path of they have to go from emergency to emergency. So that was a lot of long-range planning at that time by the board, making sure that even now, since we're still on a list and we're doing them, but they thought ahead that it may not, they don't have to pass that cost on.
I think one of the main things is, now when I look at Tom's roof maps that he has, he has a section that says when the warranty ends, and I was just looking at them before I came over, and the thing that caught my eye is some of the warranty ends in 2050. And I'm looking at that going, "I'll be sleeping next door across the street by 2050 hits around. We're never going to have to worry about us, the two of us, worry about that roof." And the thing is, when you have a roof of that quality, you have a tendency to avoid the moisture that can go undetected unless you do, when you took that infrared scan of Reed's, right? I remember seeing the pictures. That was damp insulation. Damp insulation can cause a couple of things. You lose energy, because wet insulation has no R-value, and you have the possibility for mold, you know? And that's something we don't want to ever deal with in this district. So as Tom says, you know, this is kind of indicative of the roof that went on the middle school. That was done, quite frankly, because the middle school was put up to vote for three years in a row. It passed on the third year, and we had to meet the under $18 million price point to get it to go. So when everything was done and the planning was done for the middle school, basically, when that vote passed, we had a sketch. We didn't have any design specifications. So it was a design-build project. It was sort of specifications close to that of West Running Brook School in Derry, as far as, you know, hardware and door materials and everything like that, because you just didn't have the time to spec everything out. So the site work was actually beginning before the building even had a formal design. So it was done in a short amount of period. We did get good value. We had a lot of testing going on. Every load of concrete that went in that middle school got tested by Miller Engineering to see if it was appropriate. All the compaction tests for the foundation of that school was all tested by Miller Engineering. We spent around $75,000 in testing to make sure everything would hold up over time, and all the concrete that went in that building was proper, and it was correct, and it was correctly installed. So we spent a lot of money on the back end on engineering, but, you know, to get the full specification done, so you could go out to formal bids, we just kind of acquired prices from certain contractors. So there's no shame, there's no blame, it had to be done. And then 12 years later, we had, remember the pictures I had of the seams, not the seams, but between the seams was pulling apart? And that was your, you know, single membrane roof. You expect it to fail at the seam, but it didn't fail at the seam, which was something we didn't, I can bring those pictures back if you'd like to. It failed between the seams. So that's why when we went to replace the middle school, and we were in a very good, middle school roof, we were in a very good position at that time as far as bidding goes. And I'll talk about bidding in a little bit. That we could replace the entire roof with what we had budgeted for three-quarters of the roof when we opened those bids. We have kind of a similar situation that I'll talk about tonight with the JMU's MES roof bid, because we did open those, so we'll give you that information. But, you know, these are the types of roofs that we put. Now, we've talked about garland roofing systems. We think they're a pretty darn-good roofing system, and so we specify garland. We can in the future do a specification that has all the components of this, but not have them as the primary vendor of the materials. That's something Tom and I have been talking about. We'll do the specification to specify and not, sometimes you can make a specification so narrow, you're pushing it towards one contractor only. We're not going to play that game. That's a game people play. We'll go out and write a specification for the type of roofing material and allow some options, so we have some choice, and we allow more contractors in. But in the end, we're going to pick out the best product for the district, whatever that may be.
To that end, with the materials also have a warranty requirement?
We want to specify, if we're getting 40 years now, I'm not going to go, we're not going to go back to 12 years, you know? You don't want that. We don't want that. So we're going to keep that specification in there. So whatever company can meet that specification and give us the front-to-back, all-inclusive warranty that lasts 40 years, that's going to be part of the specification. So we want to keep the same things that we have. We don't want to reduce our expectations. And a lot of the roofing industry, it depends on what petroleum's doing. It depends on the labor force. Right now, the problem is the labor force. It's not a problem, it's a great situation. Everybody's busy. If you're in construction and you're not busy, you're doing something wrong, because you should have your phone ringing off your hook right now, because it is very difficult to get people. And we've been fortunate enough with the relationships that we formed with Honeywell, with, let's put Custom Electric, let's put CSSI in there. We could put a number of other contractors.
BNS.
BNS, Integrated Systems. They do our locks, they do our security cameras. We call them, they're here. And we have trusted partners that are right here. They're either Merrimack residents or Merrimack businesses. And we try and, whenever we can, work with people that are in our community here, and the ones that we have hooked up with have treated us exceedingly well and take pride in what they do. You look at the work that was done on the upper elementary school with the brick work, that's a Merrimack Complete Masonry. Mike Isbell, Merrimack resident, went to Reed's Ferry School, you know? He was delighted to work on the building. He was so, so hung up on trying to match the color of the brick to the existing that he was having anxiety over it. It's like, "Mike, you're a mason, just, you know, pick something out, it'll look good." But, you know, even the remediation, credit control, Jesse, he went to school here, too. You know, these are two quality firms that we dealt with, who if we need them, we will make a phone call and they will come to our aid. So we try and also, in the course of what we do, is build relationships with people that we can count on to help us out, because, you know, we may not be producing on a production line, that if the line goes down, you lose millions of dollars. But we have to operate and make sure our facilities are open and are operational in order to provide an education for kids in a safe and healthy environment. And that's what we try and do, and that's our philosophy every day that we come to work.
Are there any questions from what you heard so far? Naomi, then Andy.
So you have those neat visual aids for the roofs. Can you talk about them a little bit more for those of us who know absolutely nothing about roofs?
I will defer to Mr. Tussill on that.
Okay. As Matt was holding, you know, I have, it's, this material's EPDM. It's also, another single-ply roof is TPO. TPO is what we had at the middle school. It's normally white. As we know, it lasted us the warranty length, which was 10 years.
And 13 minutes.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, when you get to the last days, what they do is they provide service. Every time you call, they're able to come out for the two or three days, and then we get past the date, and even though that problem existed, they've made it to their warranty. What you see in front of you right here, actually, two types of roofs there. There's also, there's a hot process and a cold process. The bottom layer would be a fiber board that would be used in a cold process, excuse me, the fiber board that would be used in a hot process. And we're actually going to start, the beginning of the roof, we mechanically fasten down the insulation. So the insulation or ISO is underneath all of what you see there. On top of that, the fiber board would go into a hot process. The fiber board would lay down. What that does is, when you mechanically fasten down all the insulation, eventually some of those screws work their way back out, even though they have like very large washers on there. If you walk across, and I've do it many times, walk across single-ply roofs, all of a sudden you see that little washer stick up. It doesn't break the surface, but it sure can. And unfortunately, where we live in New England, we're up on our roofs a lot. And every time you walk up there and the washer or the screw sticks up, you always have to be careful and make sure you don't rupture the roof. Not that it's that pliable, but you just don't want to do that.
Is everybody familiar with the rigid insulation? Because when Tom says insulation, I don't want you to get the wrong idea that it's like bat insulation. It's thick, it's a poly-isocyanurate type of insulation.
We normally, we use two layers of two-inch insulation, sagged seams.
Four inches. I'm not sure what the R-value is, but it is rigid insulation that goes on top. It needs to be fastened with these very long screws with the washer. Because if you went with your thumb, it's kind of hard, but if you went with, you tried to like dig in a little bit, you could, because there is some cellulose material in these two inches of insulation. So that's what he's talking about. So if you have a screw head that's sticking up a little bit, and you step on it, you could actually pierce this swimming pool liner here.
For the insulation, we're at right around R-21. They've been doing a lot of work on insulation, believe it or not, and talking about building use in the last few years. And we used to, we're all pretty aware of, you know, R-9 as far as residential in walls, R-30 in roofs. We have, it's R-20 that we have to meet, and we do meet that requirement. So that insulation is mechanically fastened down. The fiber board goes next, which either the fiber board on a hot process or the gypsum board on a cold process covers the screw heads. On top of that, there is material spread as hot asphalt would go down. You'd have the asphalt sheet. The next sheet is like a membrane on top, and that's applied, and that's, goes in the middle on top of that, that we apply more hot asphalt on a hot application. And this side right here is what will happen in the very end, they do a flood in gravel. It's normally pea stone is what they use. On a cold process, when you're going with the gypsum board, you're doing the hot also, a cold asphalt process, then you're going with the ply. You're putting more cold product down here, and you end up with a mineral sheet on top of that. Why? There's two different applications. One has the mineral sheet, and one has the pea stone. In all likelihood, the pea stone is better, especially in New England, it holds up. The mineral sheet is made for places that have existing rubber roofs. All about the weight and putting additional weight. So when we redid the middle school, it had a rubber roof originally. We went back with a mineral sheet on top of it. Both of these sheets both have a form- Both of these sheets both have a 40-year warranty. Uh, so that's the long and short of this. Do you have any questions?
I'm seeing Brandy and Andy.
With, when we replace the roof structure from this point forward, would we go with the mineral board? I know that's what we did. You just mentioned that that's what we did with the middle school. But on a go-forward, if the stone is a better product, in your opinion, would we utilize that or the mineral board?
We, we would use the stone if we can. If we're ripping off an existing, um, stone up, up top, we would go back with it. If we're ripping off a rubber membrane, we would go back with the mineral surface. It's a lot lighter, more weight. So if it's built for the weight, we would definitely go back with the pea stone and flood and gravel. If it's, was built using a, uh, the, uh, single ply system, we would go back with a mineral surface.
Andy?
So, one of the things I want to make sure that we're clear about is, we didn't wake up this morning and go, let's do a ca- a high-quality roof on this building and maybe not on others. When you started the process, starting in 2009, 2010, you, you picked on a standard of a roof that had high quality and long warranty.
Yes.
And the goal is, and I think the direction of boards back then, followed by the boards as we've worked through time, is to continue that and then not back away. I mean, you talked about going back to a 12-year warranty. I think the intent and the precedent that's been set by other boards, that we, all the boards that I've been on anyway, have followed through is to continue with that level of quality and warranty. And you're right, you could, you could spec it in a generic fashion so that it broadens it beyond just Garland, which you've used recently. But at the end of the day, it needs to be one of these two methodologies with a warranty and the vendor that is there to stand behind it for that period of time. So I think that's, is that an accurate statement of sort of how we got here and how we're going forward?
That is. And if we take, for example, we did that 2008 roof. That 2008 roof, if we put the same type of single ply that we put at the middle school, would have come up to be redone possibly in 2018. So with our, with our roofing system, as we talked about, it's quite extensive. It's roughly 11 and a quarter acres, made up of 73 different sections. All, all buildings have pretty much, uh, we, we try to keep as we can, the, the scope of the project is the same size. We do have sometimes at some schools, larger areas to be done. So they don't really get, they can't be perfectly divided in the middle. We can't say, we're going to do X amount of square footage this year and do the same. We try to fashion it so we're doing roofs that we need to do and we're doing the sections that we need to address. Make sense?
Floor's still yours?
And based on the CIP, and I don't have the, the extended CIP in front of me. The one, the, the one that Matt does with the law, extended year beyond just the six years. I think it's like seven years were done with, with the roofing projects based on the things that needed. Isn't it, is about seven years?
Yeah, it's, it's about that. Yeah, then there's a nice break in there.
Right. So, so at that point, the intent of a future board could be that since you've done all the roofs and you now have a standard, standard that you're starting from, a board could decide to start building a capital reserve fund to handle future roofing projects and be able to start building that buffer backup.
That would be my advice. Let's say if your last roofing project was half a million dollars and you don't want to do a spike in the tax rate and you know 10, 15 years from now, you're going to be starting the process with some significant projects. You could look at that half a million that you've already spent at a roof and then put it in a capital reserve fund and still not increase your, your, your tax rate. So that would be an optimal time to build up that reserve fund. I know the town makes extensive use of capital reserve funds and they have millions of dollars in there.
Right.
That would be a nice position for the future.
Except my belief is that while it's prudent to build up a capital reserve fund, you want to also give the taxpayers a little bit of a relief from all the roofing projects that you've been doing over the years. So there's a balance that would have to be achieved.
Well, that would, that absolutely.
Exactly. Right, right. But I understand the need to, to build it up prudently, but also not to pretend that, you know, to keep it flat for spiking and stuff. Cause there's other projects that are likely needed to come up. So, anyway, sorry.
Any other questions so far?
Were you going to tell us about what you found out about, since we're on roofs, you said there was something you were going to say about what you, cause you've gone out, is it appropriate?
I am looking to my right.
I don't know how we're stacking the discussion tonight, so.
That's under another section.
Yeah, it's under another section. So, um, do you want to just cover this space so that Tom doesn't have to stay for remainder?
Roofs, roofing topic is on the table, in my opinion.
There's a savings on the roof bids and we'll share that with you when we get the budget cuts or whenever you prefer. It's not my call.
Do it now? I'm here seeing not.
No, I, I wait for the budget cut. I forgot about that. I wait for the budget cuts because it's going to be contextual to the bottom line. That's just my personal opinion, but.
Well, I, so I guess the question is, because you're going to give us this sort of, we're getting a little preview that there's going to be good news. Can you explain how the good news was achieved while Tom's here, before we know what the good news is later?
Well, I'm, I'm going to say that we, we're always pretty proactive when we put it out for bid. And I normally tell everybody that I want to be the first bidder out there. Cause the way construction companies build their schedule is they go out and look for a big, solid project or a good-sized solid project. They book that and then they start booking others a little later. So they find a project that they can do, they know that they can solve it and they got plenty of spare room. But as long as they can guarantee their people work, they like that. So normally the first bid out gets a better deal. Uh, in, in the process, uh, it's been for us a long time that we've been first out. Uh, a lot of our asbestos projects, we put out early. And we put them out with the thought of, we're going to put it out, but it's due to board approval. And by being the first person out, people like to lock down their long-term or lock down their summer and then they can stop building this summer, meaning that, well, we have a job. We don't have to be a little bit desperate. We, we know it's coming. So the first job might be, I'm just going to pick a number, bid out. We might get a $1 bid on it, where later in the season, that same job might have been bid for $110 or $120. So there's always a savings that we've found historically for being the first bid out. So that, that, that's been for asbestos. It's been for roofing. Uh, almost everything that we've done on a consistent basis and we want to get it done, we, we try to be out first. And that's normally comes back with good news. And that's how.
Not always. There was, I think, uh, was it last year, the year before? We didn't, we didn't have any savings whatsoever. We were right up into, in fact, we had to make a couple of phone calls, you know, to, after we received the bids, to kind of secure a particular price that was in the operating budget. So, but normally you go, you go, you get out the gate first and you have a track record of, you know, not bidding just to see what the price is. Uh, you get some decent prices and you, you get some, uh, a lot of activity.
Any other questions? Seeing none. I think we're also here to talk about, um, Brettwood, sorry. So the cost to provide fire alarm system?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to bring the agenda, but I brought another sheet of paper with me, so I didn't, I didn't have. So we, um, we called up our, uh, fire alarm contractor who, uh, works on the, the district and asked for an estimate. So they did a walkthrough, um, with Tom. Uh, and came up with a cost to do the fire alarm panel and the strobes utilizing existing wiring?
Yes.
And adding some where they needed to. Um, price surprised me, 15,000. One five. Yeah. So that doesn't take into account any work that would need to be done as far as ADA and railings, internal, external, anything like that. That, that's another price. But the price for the, the fire alarm system would be 15,000.
Are there any questions on the Brettwood bid? Or the Brettwood quote?
Quote.
Bid made much more formal. Um, so on that, I think, are there any other questions for the maintenance department before we start deliberating on the end of the budget season? Seeing none. Thank you very much for a thorough presentation.
Thanks, Tom.
Very insightful. And we are on to, um, before we get to item number six, I forgot to mention that student representative Chris Puzzo emailed that he is on deadline to finish college applications, so he doesn't stay with us forever. And for that reason, he is excused tonight. So I will turn it over to Mark to, um, go over item number six, which is the administration's response to board queries regarding charter school students from Merrimack utilizing school district services.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, uh, the board had, uh, very specific questions about, um, students who go to charter schools, Merrimack students who go to charter schools and activities that they're involved in specifically athletics, co-curricular and special education. So, uh, you have in your packets information, uh, about, uh, over a five-year period, um, uh, student enrollment, uh, at charter schools. So again, that's Merrimack student residents who elect to go to charter schools. And so starting in the 2013, 14 school year, there were 64 students. As you can see, uh, each year following that, the number has gone up. In 2014, 15, the number was 80. 2015, 16, the number was 101. In 16, 17, the number is 105. And in the 17, 18 school year, which is the last school year for which we, you know, have firm numbers, because we're in the midst of this year, uh, that number is 122. So, uh, it's nearly doubled in five years. So, uh, relative to athletics, uh, I can share with you that at Merrimack High School, seven students, uh, attending charter schools, uh, who are Merrimack residents participate in athletics. That number is typically between five and 10 over the last five years. So right now, we have seven Merrimack high school students who are attending charter schools who participate in our athletic program. Um, additionally, at the high school, we have one student, uh, who attends a charter school who participates in co-curricular activities. That's as of right now. Um, typically that number is between six and 12 over the last five years. So in the last five years, that number is averaged around six to 12, um, students at the high school who are, who participate in co-curriculars. This year, that number happens to be one. So it's a little bit below what the five-year average has been. At Merrimack Middle School, uh, we currently have two students, Merrimack students, attending charter schools who participate in athletics. And at the moment, we don't have any students who participate, uh, in co-curriculars at the middle school who attend charter schools. I want to just spend a, a minute describing how I'm going to answer the question about special education. Um, when I talked to, uh, John Fabrizio, the director of student services about that, his, uh, reaction was, was one that, um, really shouldn't have surprised me, but it reminded me of how seriously he takes his, um, relationship with Merrimack parents. Because he, uh, is very, very careful to protect, um, the rights of parents and students to, um, have privacy, uh, when it comes to, um, students, uh, who, uh, have special needs. And so he was, uh, and I'll just be very honest, uh, director Fabrizio was very concerned that, um, if we get too specific about those numbers, it could very well be possible that, um, through the process of deduction, uh, that members of the public could kind of sort of begin to figure out, well, who might that be? And it's, it's just very, very important that our pact with our families remains, um, intact and that we really preserve their right to privacy. So, um, I preface that by saying to you that, um, typically in the last five years, uh, we've had, uh, let's say between six and 12, sometimes a little bit more students in any given year who go to charter schools, um, who require special services. And, um, for the reasons that I said to you a few minutes ago, if, if the board would allow me to keep it like that, uh, I'd be, I'd be, I think we'd be quite comfortable with that. But what I could tell you is that that is not a, an unsurprising number over the last five years.
And to that, I know that you prefaced, um, that, I, I respect John's position and, you know, I respect John's work and I would never, ever, as a board member, also want to put any family in that position. I think what we were looking for is, uh, what I was looking for was my request. So, well, I'll just tell you, the, the preface is that we are not, uh, in a position or do we desire to be in the position of turning away a student based upon capabilities. Uh, we don't accept or deny enrollments based on anything other than your residency.
Correct.
And so we don't have criteria that would, and I'm going to use the term stack the deck for student outcomes. Um, and that was really the, the core of my questioning. So I think when, um, you set that expectation, I said, give a percentage. And I think the average would be about 5% of students enrolled in charter schools are receiving special services, um, through the student services department. Um, our regular run rate for our student population runs about 20. And so with that, I really wanted to make clear to the community that as we're building our budgets, we build charter school services into our budget so that every student who lives in Merrimack, regardless of whether they attend our public schools, does get the opportunity to participate in any portion of our district that their charter school doesn't provide. And I want that, that's really what the precipice of this whole agenda item was, that we are still home for them, even if they choose to spend their academic day in another school. Um, that we are still home for them if they have needs that need support. That we're still home for them if they are, if their charter school's in Merrimack and they need transportation. And that is on us to put into our budget to make sure they are fully supported as if they were in our four walls. Uh, so that was really, I think, the foundation of my questioning in this agenda item. And to that, we are also home for them if that charter school at any point in time is not the right fit. If we are home to any child in the town of Merrimack that goes to a school that's not our public school, that at any time is not the right fit, whether it be charter or private. And so as we build our budgets, we build it to make sure there's a home base for every child to get a, an appropriate public education with all the appropriate supports that child needs. So that was actually the, the motivation of this agenda item. And I just want to make sure that's truly well-defined in our budget deliberations.
Your, your, uh, your description is entirely accurate and completely factual. Uh, and that is absolutely true. Uh, and, um, we, we work very hard to provide, John particularly works very hard to make sure that wherever a student is, if they're a Merrimack resident, that they get the services they need. And, um, and, and that happens and very much with the board's, uh, support and, uh, you know, approval over many, many years, that has been the case. And Merrimack, uh, is proud of its service to students with special education, no matter where they re- uh, attend school.
Thank you. Were there any questions on the data we had provided? Uh, seeing none, the one thing I would also, um, say in the five-year analysis and send a thank you for asking for it, is the number of schools has also increased as the years have gone on. The first year, there were really only three. And now there are 10?
That's correct.
So they're popping up. And so therefore there's a lot of, um, there's a, there's a menu of options for students. But again, if there's a club, a sport, a, a music program, whatever the case, a, a drama program that your homes, your charter school may not provide, we still are, are here to provide it. And, and our budgets and our infrastructure and our staff. And, and our budgets and our infrastructure and our staff is there to make sure it's a positive experience. So I want to kind of put that out there with, with this budget, or this agenda item during our budget deliberations, because it does come with some funding requirements. So are there any other questions on agenda item number six? Seeing none, thank you. We are on to agenda item number seven, which is proposed warrant articles. And it is me. So in our packets, we have warrant articles that we would look to put out with our, with, with the warrant. So we will go one by one. And the first article is to elect all necessary school district officers for the ensuing year, vote by ballot. So that's something we don't have to vote on. The second is, shall the Merrimack School Board be authorized to accept on behalf of the district, without further action by the voters, gifts, legacies, and devices of personal or real property, which may become available to the district during the fiscal year? Majority votes required. And we would normally vote on that so that the voters know our position on that. So are there any questions on Article Two? Seeing none, do we want to put articles to a vote tonight? I think we are possibly in a very good position to do so. Okay, so all those in favor of Article Two? Well, I guess we have to do a motion in a second, don't we? Motion to accept Article Two? Made by Andy Second, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Article Two carries five zero zero. Article Three, shall the district approve cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the School Board and the Merrimack Teachers Association, which calls for the following net changes in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year? Year 2019-2020, the estimated amount is eight hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-five. Year 2020-2021, it is eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, one sixty-four. And 2021-2022, it's nine hundred eleven thousand, eight sixty-seven. And further raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional cost attributable, the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing levels. So with that, we did complete negotiations this year for our teaching staff. And with the roughly three hundred and fifty teachers that we cover in the district under this agreement, we looked to give them salary increases to cover what we have, what's been identified as a disparity in the market with comparable districts in surrounding areas. So with that, we were looking to do every year a three-point-two-five percent increase to the base to try to make up for what we would consider a gap that is ever-increasing based on our last couple of agreements. So we're asking for the extra quarter of a point than we had in our last agreement to try to make up for some, for some pay gaps. Cindy?
And those pay gaps, just to confirm, were because there, we looked at surrounding schools and the market of those and where we stood with our pay scales.
Correct.
And felt the need to, for that extra quarter of a percent to start to make our district more competitive.
Right, to, to keep up with it and not further increase the pay gap.
Thank you.
So with that, we can put the motion to a vote. Actually, we still need to have a motion a second, so I will move, since I was the lead negotiator, to accept Article Three. Is there a second? By the second seat, Andy? So any questions on Article Three? Seeing none, all those in favor? Wait, oh, aye? I'm sorry. Do you have a question? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So my comment is, is that we've got, we need to make sure that as part of the communications of the, of the warrant article, that we not only put this out here and explain the terms, but also explain the discrepancy and where we are. And how even this percent does not all of a sudden jump us up over other districts or things like that.
Right.
I think, I think what we're going to find out through this whole budget process, and I know we've started with all these, these podcasts or videocasts that have begun, that this is an important one to call out with some of the details and to explain that. It's not as though we're trying to give teachers this Cadillac pay to, to be better than every other district. We're still not.
No.
Even with these increases, we're still not. We're still behind other districts in terms of what they pay. And we do run the risk that some of these teachers could go to other districts. And I don't mean the teachers that may be near retirement. I mean the younger ones that are highly educated, that we want to keep in Merrimack. They're the ones that are, it's sort of like being in New York City with all these different job opportunities around. You can move around and find the one that fits you best. Well, we run that risk if our salaries are not competitive in terms of what we do. So I think it's very important.
Thank you. So are there any other questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero. Article Two, uh, Four, sorry, wow. Article Four, shall the district if Article Three is defeated authorize the school board to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Three cost items only? So with that, obviously, you know, if for some reason this is voted down, we call one more special meeting to try to get an alternate, alternate agreement in place based on cost items. So is there a motion to accept Article Four? Made by Cindy, second, seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Article Five, shall the district raise and appropriate an amount up to two hundred thousand dollars, said sum not to exceed ten percent of the unencumbered surplus funds remaining at the end of the fiscal year, 2018-2019, and to transfer that amount to the School District Repair Capital Reserve Fund, previously established for the purpose of providing unanticipated and/or emergency repairs to all school district facilities? Clearly, that's come up this year again as a need to use them. We've used it a few times in the last few years for things like Superstorm Sandy, the bleachers at the high school that got broken during a pep rally? So those things that are really, things that would not have been normal course of business. And obviously, this, this switch at the high school was, was where we were looking at next, this, almost recently. So with that, again, it would not, it would not be asking for an additional two hundred thousand to our operating budget. It would take this year's operating budget, what is left over, up to ten percent, not to exceed two hundred thousand, would go into this emergency fund. Because right now, it's at about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And as it stands today. So with that, is there a motion to accept Article Five? Or a question or a comment? You have all of the above available, so. Andy?
So my comment is, is, and this is to administration, how did you arrive at two hundred thousand dollars versus, versus maybe one fifty or a hundred thousand? Just curious as to the methodology?
I, I think we conferred and felt, given the BAT mitigation, given the switchgear, that we were probably better advised to go two hundred thousand, because we keep coming closer to that number. So if we could, we put that in reserve. I mean, it just seems our practice in the last three or four years has been such that we don't want to deplete it completely. And so we thought that that was an appropriate amount. But it was after conferring and based on what's gone on in the last three, three years, I'd say.
And to support that, I think that is, in the communication that we do, we've got to have some of the details. And, and not just the BAT mitigation, which was sort of, we didn't have enough to cover all that, except for the grant, obviously. But the other things that we had to do, the bleachers, the other things like that, the, the switch.
I think we certainly, not only in the voters' guide, but we also could do a piece on that with our communications plan to talk about a capital reserve fund. And it's like a savings account for a family. It's the same thing to put for unanticipated consequence. And for a period of time, we weren't drawing upon it. And then all of a sudden, it seemed as if every year, something was happening, a transformer or something went. And I think, as I said, we did some serious conferring about this and felt two hundred thousand was the more accurate number.
Are there any other questions or comments on Article Five? Seeing none? All those in favor signify? Oh, wait, do we have, I thought you made the motion, sorry. My apologies, it's nine o'clock, must be that hour. So your motion, is there a motion to accept Article Five? Made by Andy, second, seconded by Cindy? Any other questions or comments on Article Five? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero. Article Six is, shall the district raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred twenty-five thousand, seventy-six dollars for the purpose of pavement and drainage reconstruction in the parking lot area off School Street and, at James Master Cola Elementary School and James Master Cola Upper Elementary School? And that's come up during our, our maintenance presentations, that really both projects, drainage and pavement should be done together. And the benefits that it will create for things like safety and water management in the parking lots. So are there any questions or comments on Article Six? Andy?
So when I saw this article, and I remember it was in the CIP, my first thought was, do we push it out? And then, then the old, somebody saying kick the can down the road went in the back of my head. But the whole point of us putting in a warrant article was so the voters could chime in as to whether this was the right year from there. So I think we owe it to the voters to keep this article in here, and then they can decide whether it's appropriate. And again, we need to have the communications explaining why we need it with pictorial and, and things which I think we've got, so.
I would just say that Steve Keach has already done work with Matt, so it would be our intention to show a pictorial representation of both. Especially recently, when we had major rain, we were having flooding on the corner of Bishop and School Street. So I don't know whether Matt captured that. But we definitely want to do that as well as show exactly how that parking lot would be reconfigured, which we think would be best for the community. And we have to remember, that really is a community center. I mean, that's where people go to vote. There's just so much going on in the Master Cola complex. So we think it would be better for all concerned. But clearly, you could not vote on this if you didn't have a more accurate representation. We felt, though, that we had kept you apprised of this as we've gone forward with the capital improvement plan, so.
Yeah, we, we currently have a, a design drawing. Last week, the crew from Steve Keach's company was out there doing some additional surveying. Because the one issue we want to address, too, which we really haven't talked about, is the walking towards the entrance of Master Cola Elementary School and then the entrance to the Smith Gym. The way the parking lot is sunken so much, that grade is no longer ADA compliant. So that's another issue we want to solve when redesigning the parking lot. So that's all in the plan and will be forthcoming.
Makes complete sense. So thank you for the update on that. Are there any other questions on Article Six? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, wait, we haven't made a motion yet. Again, it's your questions, you're killing me. No, you're not going to make the motion, you're throwing my, throwing me off. So is there a motion for Article Six? Made by Naomi, second, seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero. I have not done that before. This is, oh my goodness, okay. You are keeping me on my toes tonight, Andy, I cannot, I cannot lie. So we are on to item number eight, which is the proposed options for budget cuts. So I will turn it over to Marjorie Matt.
So I just want to start out to say that from January seventh, when we last convened this last week, that really I applaud the efforts of a leadership team who really met with us to confer about how we might make sure that we got to default or less. In addition to conferring with the leadership team, and that would include for the public principals, assistant principals and directors, I want to, again, commend Matt and Tom Tussow, because really, it was going back and looking at some of the maintenance items to see what we might do to meet your goal. So Matt has prepared a grid for you, and we're going to walk you through it, pointing out that we have two options for you to look at. And I would also say that we realize you're seeing this for the first time, because we just really finished it this morning. And if you cannot make a decision tonight because you want time to ponder, certainly, next week, your meeting is on Tuesday night, January twenty-second. And we don't start meeting with the Budget Committee until the twenty-third. So whether it's tonight or Tuesday, either is fine. So Matt, do you want to walk through the items, please?
Sure. Okay, we start off with the, the bid results from the roof that we had. The cost came in around sixty thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars lower than we had estimated. So that is a cut you could just take right now, because if we do the, the roof, well, we're going, the roof is in the budget, it would be subtracted by sixty thousand, three eighty-five. In talking with Tom and Andy Schneider, I believe, mentioned if we could look at the roofs as far as different sections. And there is a section over the main office at the upper elementary school that we could not do. It would not really hurt us this year. We could put that off. And that's Section I. And that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Because when we did the bids, we did it with Option A, which is the two sections. And then Option B, which is that one section where the roof is. So we've got two separate prices. And the price for the winning bidder was a hundred and ninety. So if we wanted to remove that to get down below default, we could remove that hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The next item is the, we've been talking about switch gears, and the one at the high school has been problematic. We had a big meeting with the fire chief, the deputy fire chief, the building inspector, the code enforcement officer, and the chief engineer from the state of New Hampshire Electrical Bureau. And we were talking about switchgear in general, and we started to go through the ones we do have. And the state electrical inspector, the head of the state electrical inspectors, stated that, were you having any issues with the one at the upper elementary school? And the answer to that was, was no, we haven't had any issues. Said, well, you could, there's no hurry in replacing it if you haven't had any issues with it. Has the other one been tripping out? Yes, the other one is. Well, that's the one you need to pay attention to. But he says, if it were me, I wouldn't be too quick to replace that, because you haven't had any incidents with it. And we've been fairly clean with that switchgear, even though it is, it's been in place for quite some time. We've never had an issue. So that would be a hundred thousand dollars that we would offer out of maintenance to be taken out of the operating budget to help us get below the default budget. Another item in, in maintenance is the sink bases. We've had, I believe, eleven in the budget. We'd remove approximately half of those. The money would be twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-five that we would cut. And then would be, we'd be looking at all the replacement furniture plans at the schools. Eight thousand, bless you. Between Cindy and Mark, it's, it's kind of like, wow. I'm going to go home, my, my throat is getting sore right now. Yeah. So we would look at the furniture replacement at Master Cola Upper Elementary School, eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight. The furniture at Reed's Ferry School, nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven. Thornton's Ferry, twelve thousand, forty. J. Muse, eighty-five, eighty-nine. Merrimack Middle School, three thousand, nine sixty. And furniture replacement at the high school, five thousand, ninety. So when you take the bid reduction at sixty, the roof reduction at one ninety, the switchgear at a hundred, and you keep going through at 100, and you keep going through the sink bases and all the additional furniture replacement lines, we're looking at a reduction of $411,584, which would put you $333 below default. That would be Option A. Option B is to delay the entire roof at Master Cola Elementary School and J-Muse for one year and still delay the switch gear at the upper elementary school for one year. That's a cut of $755,805, and that would put you $344,554 under default. So we have an Option A, we have an Option B, and that's what we have to present this evening.
I think your hand was up first, Andy. It's not a motion, I got it.
I'll raise two hands if I'm doing a motion, I guess. So I first want to thank administration for doing this. I know that I was one of the people that requested this to get down to that level. And I think it's important. I think the board sometimes takes heat to say, "Why is your default budget higher than your proposed budget? You don't give me a choice." Well, in fact, we are because the default budget includes a lot of extended costs that we're working very hard to cut back. So I want people to understand that our goal to try to get down below a default budget is important because it's showing that we're trying to really control our costs. And having done this for a lot of years now, it's, when you're on this side of the table, you can see the work, even though it may not be feeling that way on the other side. So I want to thank administration for doing this. You explained everything very clearly as far as the bid change. The question I have is, I'm always nervous when we decide to say, "Let's delay an entire roofing project." Obviously, Tom puts a methodology together on the order they need to be done, the timeframe they need to be done. I know that by choosing one of them, the section over the office area, I know that you guys were up there not too far when you redid the whole office area, so it's probably well-known that it's not as bad as the rest.
Right.
So that makes sense in the top part. The question is, what's Tom's temperature when you talk about taking all the roofing away this year? And I don't want us to just kick a problem down the road that the next...
He would prefer if we do the two sections because they are rubber roofs. The roofs where the main office is, is not a rubber roof, and he has more confidence in that area. He would be fine, and we would do any necessary repairs if we had to, but he's a little more confident with not doing the part over the main office and doing the parts that are left over Section B1 and Z, I believe it is.
And the other question I have related, and then I'll stop, is are there other...so I know that when you try to do these roofs, you try to batch them on the same building so that you get the economy scale for labor. Are there, and I apologize, I can't remember, are there other J-Muse roofing projects in future years that this one could be batched into? The little section?
Oh, absolutely.
So there's other projects coming up that we would make that apart?
Yeah.
So obviously, there could be an increase because of just the general cost increase, but there wouldn't be a labor or a cost because you have to bring materials to a different building?
Yeah, general conditions, you would lump that in, and yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Brandy, and then Cindy.
I have a request relative to the upkeep on the sink bases. Is that where we have, there was some that were rotting at the bottom, so we wanted, we already went through round one of replacing a certain amount, and I can't off the top of my head...
We did 11 this year. So there are 11 remaining. There were 22 in total, and the worst ones were done first.
Okay.
So this has been done, that's why I mentioned the team. So Michelle Romaine, the principal of the building, is cognizant of what we proposed, that we would do like the next six, and she approved that. So it's not as if we haven't shared that with the respective principal. If we made a change in maintenance, then the principal was included in the decision.
Perfect. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Cindy, you were next.
Yeah, I mean, I would throw out an idea, which would be if we go with the Option B cuts, we have a number of things on our cut list that we're also deferring. I might ask us to go back and revisit some of those and bring them forward a year. If we're going to push back the roofing, let's say, if that's the route, then I would suggest we move some of these items forward so that we're not kicking the can on all of these items together. So, for example, there's a couple of items on there that I feel are, that, you know, could be important. One would be the whiteboards that's used in learning. The crack fill, the playground areas at Reed's Ferry, that's a potential safety issue for small children. I'm wondering, I guess that's a question. And then a couple of other items, oh, the split air conditioning units for the student services, that one's been pushed back a couple of years already. I would suggest moving that forward and getting a couple of these items done so we're not pushing everything back.
So the approach that I'm looking at, I'd actually like Option A because of the roofing problem, but you hit on the split air conditioning units for the special ed. Another proposal I was going to make, based on our previous discussion, was cutting approximately $30,000 off of the transportation budget, based on what we talked about in terms of the Merrimack stuff, which would allow us to add the $30,000 back in and keep that Option A pretty flat. So that's one way to treat this without going all the way. I'm not sure how I'd feel about removing the entire roof, only because of the question that I just asked, Matt, so.
And I have a way in that I know that, when I asked this question about, you know, could we wait a year? And the answer was yes. And I liked the answer because next year we are going to have lesser bonded debt. The biggest thing that this will accomplish is if we do have, and he felt comfortable saying that it would last the year, you know, but not guaranteeing because nothing in life is guaranteed, as we've all learned. With that said, I'm more comfortable putting the whole roof off. I like your idea, Cindy, of bringing a couple of things back that we feel were important in the cut list so we're not putting the whole cut list on a delay. I do think the $30,000 explained itself tonight, why we should take it out of the budget. Putting that back into some of the cut list items, I agree with that. The split air conditioning is definitely something that we've talked about, how, you know, it does, you know, the portable air conditioners do just so much. So you're right, it's for those who are medically sensitive to high temperatures, you know, to be more responsive, I think is, you know, a better answer for us. So I like where that's going. But again, with the bonded debt going down next year, taking that $655,000 and moving it out one year, the bonded debt and CIP numbers are now levelized. And that's important, which means that's not a dip in a spike or a spike in a dip. So that's where I really looked at the motivation of that. So actually, right now, we'd be in a spike in a dip, instead of level it out. And that's really what I was looking to do with that $655,000. You can have a qualifying question.
Clarify, I meant clarify.
Okay, well, clarifying is fine, too.
So I think the bonded debt we remove is 460-some-thousand next year. It's the honeywell that goes away after. Okay. 460. So it's not quite the roof, but it's getting close to it.
But with the other CIP items that levelizes out.
But my question is, is that I also believe that next year, there's a million-dollar roofing project on the CIP.
I'm not asking to move that. Those two combined, because of what we have in the CIP this year, it's at 3.6 million. So that wonderful spreadsheet, which I thought I had with me, and it looks like I don't, that gives us the bonded debt with, it went from 3.6 down to, I think it was 2.8.
Right.
So, or 2.7. So basically, we're looking to levelize it out, so it'd be three and three.
High School Editions 2021.
High School Editions 2021.
Yeah.
So it goes down again.
The high school edition will come to an end, too.
So we're starting to take that bonded debt out. So I'm not kicking the can with, what I would call a safety net. I do see it, and I'm looking ready to, Brandy, because I love that term, and I've used it myself, and it's exactly the answer. But it's delaying it to levelize it where it is at a lesser risk. If you told me it was, you know, spongy, if you told me it was raining inside, I put my hands up, I wouldn't ask a question. But we're not, we have gotten, we've got no indication from Tom Tussow that we are there. We're doing it to be ahead of it, but we are also on top of it. So that's where I don't feel that that $655 is the highest of risk for us to delay a year, based on what we heard from Tom in his presentation. Naomi, did you have your hand up?
I think I mentioned the last meeting I attended. It's not a deal breaker for me, but I don't like pushing roofs off if we don't have to. But that said, I'd be curious to have feedback as far as if we were to do Option B and say, just to choose a number, that we wanted to come in under the default budget by not that much, using the strategy, Cindy, that you've suggested. I'd be interested in knowing administration's sense of what they would most want to have restored from the cut list, to use some of that as well.
Excellent question. Would you be able to, it sounds like we're not voting on it tonight, so it gives us time. We have a lot of questions, and this is good that we do. But if we can get a priority of your cut list on what you'd want restored, I'm going to put it back on us, though, to not just give them, you know, a pie in the sky because we are too close to the end. So if we can get a number of, if we're looking at $755,805, do you want to bring $100,000, like, how much under default are we looking to be? You know, a dollar, a million dollars? Yeah, $1 million dollars. $100,000, so what are we looking at? Cindy?
I mean, what I was looking at, and just looking at the cut list, was to not bring back the honeywell engineering study, as well as the office replacement windows for Reed's Ferry and Thornton's Ferry. But what I saw, and I welcome administration's viewpoint on what they would, how they agree or disagree is fine, it's for the sake of discussion. I would say, you know, can we bring back the wood post replacement, crack fill the playground areas, the tables at J-Muse and MHS, and then crack fill the student parking lots? And then the whiteboards and the air conditioning units. And I think altogether, those items, I think they came to once about $167,000. So that would leave a delta of...
Remember, take about $30,000 off.
About half, yeah. And then, yeah, we add the 30 back in, so we're about a couple hundred thousand dollars under default, I think. Rough, rough numbers.
Okay. So if you said, put $100 in, say, $150,000 back, now we have $30,000 that we're going to cut out of the operating budget?
Yeah, and if we wanted...
Would that be a nice number?
If we wanted to do one window this year and one the next, to break that out, I'd be supportive of that as well.
Would you, so would you say $150 is the consensus of the board? Do you want to make a motion on that, since it was your thing? Thank you.
I would make a, I'd like to make a motion that we add back the items from the cut list to make our budget, proposed operating budget, approximately, maybe a range of $125,000 to $175,000 below the default budget as it stands in the Option B cuts. Not default budget, the proposed budget in the Option B cut.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. Are there questions or comments to the motion? Andy?
I'm actually not going to support this motion, only because I have to go back and look to verify in my eyes what the statement you made about leveling out, based on bonded debt. Because I'm not a, I can't do the backup of napkin on that with the debt schedule. I've got to go back to the longer one, look at the amounts, to see exactly where we're going to be, to make sure we're clear, because there are, I want to see what else is in the CIP that year. I want to understand it. So I, if this gets enough votes on the board, that's fine, but when we come in next week, I'll have my head straighter in terms of, but these are, we're talking big dollars here, and I want to make sure we're doing the right thing, as well as helping the taxpayers out. So I'm not going to rush to judgment on this one.
Thanks, Andy. Cindy?
I would say, if we're not already, I'm comfortable delaying. There's really no rush to do this motion tonight, or is there?
I kind of think that we're going to have a limited amount of time where the leadership could come together and prioritize what we're asking for. So I'd like, it doesn't mean that we're going to make a motion to accept Option B. We're not making, we're making a motion to, what we're really giving guidance to the administration on how to prioritize, if we went with Option B, what we're going with.
Okay, I'm fine. I'll leave it at this, and so...
Actually, I would request that you change your motion, which I would support. And that would be to have administration look at their maintenance department or this cut list and prioritize the items that they would, they believe are the most important to have back, to give us a way to draw a line when the time comes. Because that's really what you want. You want to say, "I want administration to tell me, of all the things on the cut list, what do they want first? What do they want second? What do they want third?" And put it in a prioritized list, and then we can then decide and kind of do it.
Yep, that's fine with me. I'll change my motion to allow administration to go back, prioritize the items on the cut list, I would say, in a, one through whatever number they are. And then we can decide then next week how much we will actually then put back in to offset what we're pushing out to next year.
And you're okay with reseconding that? That's good? So, and I agree, as, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I just, I want to clarify, I know about prioritizing, and the limit is $150,000 to $175,000, is that correct? Rather than go through the whole thing, I just assume, no, that kind of the stop point is $150,000, $175,000.
I, with my motion, I would prefer than you just prioritize them all in order.
Prioritize everything, okay? And then can I also ask, will you take, do a final rendering on how much you want to take out of the athletic transportation? Either take out or leave. So we have that, too, because we need to know what the bottom line is there.
Yeah, Andy has written down to the number, because he was playing on his phone calculator. So I will yield to him for a better number. So we're going to reduce it by, or reduce it to? Okay, we'll reduce the...
So, based on the decision that we, the discussion that we had, the amount of transportation to anything that's in Merrimack equates to $33,053. So I would, if you subtract that amount from $63,939, which was the total, you come out with $30,886, if my math is right. So that item goes from $63,939 to $30,886. Which is actually $13,000, $33,000.
About 55% cut. Okay, so I think that gives you some data points to work with. Let's put the motion to a vote, so that way you know that we're serious. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, yes.
Should I add then that piece to my motion?
No, that's just because we, that was just an exercise. This is about cuts.
Okay.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0, so you have your guidance. We vetted the reduction for athletics, so we know where that's at. And so we're on to technically item number nine, which is the default budget presentation.
Thank you. I had a really nice handout that I left on my computer at work, at the office, but I kind of went through and sketched out the high points. The default calculation is actually in your budget book in the back pages and has been posted online. Ah, Marge came to my rescue, thank you. And has been posted online for, well, when we first posted the budget online, it's been there. There's a couple of new wrinkles in the law this year. If we do a reduction in force, which we have, I cannot bring those positions forward. In years past, if we reduced three or four teachers, I could count them in the default budget because the reduction didn't take place in the default budget. It's last year's budget as voted. But now, because there's... But now, because there's reductions in forces, I have to take them out of the default budget. So when I go to a portion that we have an increase in contracted salaries of only 150,000, that's what the teachers cost us now, contractually, less the 195,000 that we gained by the reduction in force in three teachers. So if I were to keep the same staff levels, you'd be looking at like a $250,000 wage increase that would be in the default. But because of the new rules, it's only 150. I have to take those three positions that are riffed out of the operating budget. So you start with the 1819 operating budget, as posted on the MS22, which is 76,581,286. You remove a transfer to capital reserve, because it was a Warren article, of 150,000. You remove the purchase of Brentwood, because it was a Warren article. Benefits, as you well know, New Hampshire retirement system, health insurance, dental insurance, that adds up to 1.7 million, so that's an increase in the default budget. The training for the SRO is not in this budget, so I consider that a one-time item, not likely to reoccur. So that reduces the default budget by 6,000. There's a driver education drop in participation of around 4,370, that's a reduction. There is an increase in transportation of 79,454, that is an increase. You remember the Warren article for kindergarten, full-day kindergarten? When I wrote it, I separated out the wages for staff and the associated benefits from the furniture, and put a statement in there that the wages or the positions would be in the default budget, but the, the furniture basically would not. So the cost of the kindergarten furniture, the startup furniture, was around 69,000. 11,000 at Reed's, no, 11,000 at MES, 23,000 at Reed's, and 34 at Thornton's Ferry, that has been removed from this budget. Debt service went down by 53,000. We have the Brentwood building, which we have to heat and maintain, so the water and soar went up by 2,000. Gas, natural gas, 8,500. Electrical, around 10,000. And oil, 2,500. Another increase is the maintenance rubbish disposal contract, which I believe you talked about when Tom put his budget forward, has an increase of 16,750. The heat light retrofit payment that we have, the lease purchase, is up by 15,808. And then being removed is the Thornton's Ferry paving, 214,826. And then the PFOA water filtration system. I looked at the budget, that wasn't a Warren article, but it was, again, a story of a one-time purchase, not likely to reoccur in preceding budgets, so that came out. Food service, which is, even though it doesn't affect the tax rate, it's special revenue fund, we still have to account for, so that increase mainly in wages for the food service workers was 17,588. And special education, netting out the cost of the pares, which is included in the contracted salary increases, only went up around 68,220. So I'll, I'll have this, I'll post this online, and I'll email you each a copy, but that, when you total it together, comes to 77,787,568, which is the amount of the default budget. And then at the back of your budget book and posted online, is that figure and the 36 pages that go with it, to show all the line items, the ins and the outs, and everything like that. That's an additional statutory requirement that I have to do this year. I do it anyway, I've always done it that way, but I've never published it, I've published the summary version, which is both a Department of Revenue form that takes the categories that I have here, puts them in a different, a different format, but is, is much less detailed than what I'm sharing with you tonight. So this will be something we'll have to talk about at the deliberative session, that is a change. So I'll be presenting it there, and I'll have copies of the 36-page line item default budget for view for everybody. So in a nutshell, that is the default budget, and I'm sorry, I don't have a handout that you could follow along.
All right, Matt, thanks, we appreciate the thorough overview. Are there any questions? Cindy?
I would just ask you to post the option A and B cuts as well, in case people are following at home and want to reference what we are looking at.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Excellent. And are there any questions on the default budget? Seeing none, it's not like we could argue with anyone, it's the state. We're on to item number 10, which is board discussion on proposed 2019-2020 budget. We have definitely proven tonight, we are not ready to push it forward to the Budget Committee, but we will put it on Tuesday's agenda to finalize if there are any areas that we need to vet thoroughly, that need data from the district. Again, email the superintendent, copy me, so that way leadership has the opportunity to prepare the data that we're looking for and be as thorough as possible. And I think we've given them kind of where we're going with this. So, so with that, we'll find out how, you know, how we get there. The one thing we'll make sure is in your packets, in case you don't have it, is the CIP and bonded debt schedule. If we can just get a fresh copy in the next board packets, make sure everyone has it, I have mine in my binder. So I knew I had it the whole time, it was driving me crazy, I couldn't find it. So, but it is my, probably my favorite document, again, year-over-year, that Matt does for us, because it really does, it's the part of the budget we can control with, with, you know, certain assurances, where things like healthcare and retirement, we can't. So this is something where we can, everything we can do to stabilize the tax rate, that's probably the best place to find it. So is there any other discussion or comments, based on the discussions we've had in the last few weeks on this, on this budget? Well, it's giving Andy a good night's sleep tonight, so that's good. So if there's none, we will go on to public comments on agenda items. So again, please state your name and address for the record, but Rosemarie knows it.
Rosemarie Rung, 21 Ministerial Drive. I have a couple of comments. The first comment I want to make is really just as a private citizen regarding the MTA contract and the increase in pay. And I know, you know, I hate going back the 23 years when I was on the board, but those nine years I was on the board, we always paid lower than our surrounding labor market. But the fact is, our benefits and our working conditions, our commitment to professional development, our administration, made up for it. So I, I just want to remind the board, when you're looking at pay, you really can't look just at salary, you have to look at total compensation, because people will leave a high-paying job if everything else is not working for them. And they'll stay at a job where they may not be making as much than they could elsewhere because of other things. So, and I remember I was on a negotiating team, it must have been in 97 or 98, and, you know, we were getting, we had a couple of building projects going on. We had just finished the addition at the, at MES, and that bump out on the high school cafeteria. You know, we had a lot of capital projects going on at the time, and so we were very, very sensitive to the needs of the taxpayer. And what we did, as far as the teacher contract goes, and I don't know if this is a strategy that you've, you've done, but we had requested of the MTA to, you know, okay, here's your 3.25%, but we want 50% of it on these steps. So it addresses the comment you made, Andy, about those teachers who may have like, let's say, seven or eight years of, of experience in the district, those are the ones that we really keep, you know, they're pretty much in their sweet spot. And so if we made sure that those steps did a better job of retaining them than, you know, making it like, every step gets three, three and a quarter increase. So there are some salary strategies for the next go-round, if you do find that we're not retaining teachers at that mid-career range, you know, put the increase there. And then the other comment I want to make, with my state rep hat on, is looking at HB400, it's a bill that authorizes the use of certain private vehicles to transport students to and from school activities. May be a way to address the, the bus driver shortage. We may be able to take coaches, assistant coaches, parents, if they, if this bill passes and they fulfill the requirements, they could use their private vehicle to transport students, maybe for a small stipend and expenses, but it may be a go-around for, rather than getting a bus driver. I know my son, my younger son was on the golf team, and there are very few, relatively few players, especially if they don't, if they're not assigned a match, but I could see somebody with a minivan easily, I mean, there were a lot of parents that went, to just, you know, if you had someone that met the requirements, they're going to go anyway. Or a coach, or assistant coach, could take that small number, and it may be a way to address that not being able to secure bus drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemarie. With that, we have concluded our program for this evening. I will entertain the motion to adjourn, made by Andy, second, seconded by Cindy, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 500. Thank you and good night.